The time is now seven oh three P M and I will call the meeting to order and maybe have roll call please.
Mayor Rykel.
Here.
Pro Tem not. Trustee Britnell.
Here.
Trustee Claussen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Hammerhand.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
Alright, maybe I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, you seated? The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any emails or phone calls in regards to non-agenda items.
No, I did not hear from anyone today. I did not show any raised hands.
Yeah, we're on.
Anybody sign in?
Nobody for public comment.
Okay, and we've got nobody signing in the chambers for public comment. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two board of trustees meeting. Anybody like to discuss that or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by trustee Britnell, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Does any board members have any conflicts of interest tonight?
No circuit, Mr. Mayor.
I do, I will be recusing myself from the panoramic subdivision request for water service discussion because my parents live in that subdivision. So with the mayor pro tem being gone, we will have to find.
The mayor may designate a chair of the meeting.
Okay.
In your absence.
I will designate trustee Hammerhand because he's the chair of our other committee, I believe.
Fair point.
So for that agenda item, you will take over, so.
Should be fun.
Yeah. Do we have any agenda changes tonight by staff or the board?
None by us.
None here.
Nope. The next item on the agenda then is the Ninth Street paving project update and I will turn this over to Director Foner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also have Derek, our town engineer Derek Walters from Boundary Unlimited for this as well. As you know, in February, we went out to bid for this project. Frontier paving got it. We've done numerous projects with frontier paving and we approach them all the same way. They will come in and mill the road like we did Home Avenue. They will grade the road, any soft spots will be fixed by the town. We started the process on Ninth Street. On April fourth is when Frontier mobilized their crew to begin, they milled that day, they bladed it that day to get it ready for asphalt. The next day, we had a meeting with them and we started paving. Everything looked good. We were three quarters of the way through paving the bottom mat when a soft spot appeared. Right around three ten North Ninth Street, we stopped the paving, we fixed the soft spot, and then we continued on paving. We finished the paving project. Then the next week, April twelfth, we saw the cracking that was starting to take place in the pavement. We brought Frontier out, we were trying, we were looking at it, Derek was out there as well to see what the problem was. We didn't go in and fix it right away, we wanted to see if anything else appeared. And on April twenty-first, the area just south of the ditch appeared to start cracking and everything. So at that point, we made a plan and a date with Frontier that they'd be able to come back in to pave if we started taking them out. So on the twenty-seventh, we, the staff excavated the areas to twenty-four inches. As we was excavating, we noted that the soils contained some wet clays. And that's where the soft spots came from on the twenty-first and the twelfth. And they didn't appear until approximately a week after we had already paved. We dug approximately twenty-four inches, we added GeoGrid filled with inch and a half road base to stabilize it and topped with three quarter inch road base and Frontier paved. May twenty-third, we noticed the next one, and this was the last one that we noticed. And this one appeared right next to where we had patched just below the ditch. So in hindsight, we probably should have just went clear across the road at that point and fixed that whole soft spot. So that one has to be, we haven't fixed that one yet, we're waiting on Frontier and their timeframe to be able to come back in. But on the twenty-third, we met with David from Frontier and you attached to the packet is his letter. And then on the thirtieth of August, we met with town engineer Derek Walters and walked the street as well. And you see his letter is attached to this as well. And in closing, you know, the soft spots presented a week after we paving was complete, since May twenty-third, nothing else has moved on that road. There's no other areas showing signs of problem. You know, the road, while it doesn't look aesthetically pleasing, it is a structurally sound road that is going to be there and hold up for the fifteen, twenty years that asphalt will hold up on a road. Like mentioned in Derek's report, we're gonna watch it through the winter and spring to make sure nothing else pops up. Because on the asphalt itself, there is still a warranty for the asphalt from Frontier. So we will watch it in into the spring and make sure no- nothing else on the asphalt creates a problem. And also just to let you know, the patch that is there at Ninth and Grand from XL that in the next week or two, they're supposed to be scheduling. They, XL wasn't happy with that patch either, we failed that patch. And they couldn't believe their subcontractors put a patch like that in. So that will be fixed also, and that's from a gas leak that XL had. And Derek and I will try to answer any questions that you might have.
I just have, so in Derek's memo, the line that says, it appears that the summer heat in Frontier is rerolling has presumably solved the problem. And it warned, he claims do not need to be pursued, when did they last roll that road?
That was in the May series when it was patched, when you did the first patching, right, Jerry?
In the end of, the end of April.
Okay.
When we did the patching. And then through the-
That was, so April twenty-seventh. Is when they rerolled and they rerolled the entire street or just the?
No, they actually rolled, they did. They did roll the entire road, sorry, I'm thinking, I wanna make sure I was right.
Okay.
And then through the summer heat and just traffic use also.
Does Frontier's contract have a warranty provision in it?
That's where I'm going is what, what date does the warranty start? Because if they were still working on it in May, and we have a year warranty, it shouldn't start until the day they were finalized with that project.
We, we may want to get something in writing with them that confirms.
Yeah, and I would also, I mean, that's my next step I was going to, if they're so sure that there's not a, a problem, I would like to see if we can get them to warranty it through another summer and make extend it eighteen months instead of a normal twelve month. I mean, we, we've had problems, it's supposedly fixed, May gives us one free cycle, it doesn't give us another heat cycle on that road to see what could potentially happen. So yeah, if we find out.
So.
I would like to find out.
Eighteen months.
I would like to see if they'll, if they'll warranty it for eighteen months.
Till next, like August or September.
Next August, yeah.
But also change the starting date of the warranty period to when they actually completed the work. So eighteen months from that point in time.
They can actually pulled off the site for completion or, I mean, do we sign off and say, yes, we accept this road on a certain date, or is it just when they're done, that's the date?
When they're done, that's usually the date. But we did go back in and patch it on the twenty-seventh. And then we do have that one more patch that I was talking about, south of the ditch where we should have just went across the whole road the first time and we didn't.
Right. So yeah, I would like to see whatever we find the date of project completion and see if they'll give us eighteen months from that point.
Okay. I have that wrote down, I will get with David. At Frontier.
And that's, I don't know, everyone else?
No, I, I agree with that. No, I agree. It's fair. A road that failed in seven days.
I'm not an asphalt guy, so I don't know how.
Generally speaking, you expect them to work for more than seven days.
Seven, generally. But that's-
Technically, we don't know, it wasn't a hundred percent conclusive that it was the asphalt, it was subgrade. That failed on a lot of these cracks. If that makes sense.
Yes, it does. And my thoughts on that are, you know, I mean, I read the packet and, you know, it doesn't really matter what the reports say. It doesn't really matter how long people from Public Works say they've been, you know, doing that type of work. It doesn't matter how many letters are behind your name. The fact of the matter is mistakes were made on Ninth Street. Mistakes need to be corrected and they can't happen again. And I'm sick and tired of town staff cutting corners to save a dollar. And we owe it to the citizens of this town to put forth a good product. We owe it to the citizens of this town to do a good job. And we owe it to the citizens of this town to be responsible with their money by not having to go back and do things twice.
But on the second thought, I've been in construction, some of that, if we went to replace that, that street could still be there. You wouldn't have known that soft spot was there until you dubbed that up.
Yeah, and-
I mean, there's no way of knowing some of that until you, you would disturb it, so you really could-
Well, and even then, the day we paved.
Yeah, I mean, so it's-
We were running eleven to thirteen ton trucks up and down that road all day long. And that one soft spot was all that came up. Until later, and you would have, you would think that any soft spots would have surfaced then.
It's, you know, it happened to us out here at the storage units, Frontier paved that and it was two months later, all of a sudden, we had a soft spot and it'd been there for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
It just got disturbed and it's just one of those deals, you disturb it. We had to go down three feet with GeoGrid, so you don't know. So it's really nobody's fault, it's just soil is what the soil is around here.
Yeah, and I don't know, ju- just as a thought, how, how that works with warranty. Because if you have the contractor come in, tear it up, if he sees any soft spots, he does it. Then the whole warranty is on that contractor if the road fails. So now that we have basically two entities messing with the road, if there's warranty work, you, you know, because the asphalt company could say, well, that wasn't us, that was the subbase and we didn't do it, so we shouldn't have to pay for it. See what I'm saying? I'm just wondering if, if in the future, if we pave a road, have the contractor do the whole thing. I don't know, it's just a thought.
It could be, I think it could be as easy as aligning the contract that the subcontractor's gonna verify the condition before they pave.
Was that, did we bid that as one job in Frontier essentially, was the general and they hired a sub? Or did we let, were there two separate contracts, subbase and?
No, there was one contract and it was with Frontier for paving, it wasn't the subbase.
Right, I think the town is, has, based on the staff's experience with, you know, this kind of work, we've always felt comfortable to try to save a few bucks to let the town do the, the base, the subbase.
And it's been successful with several other projects, it's not like it's been multiple projects where we've got these problems, this is the first time we've had it.
I mean, if you look at Home Avenue, we, we did that.
We found, we found the soft spots before they paved. And we went in there and we fixed them. This one, we found one soft spot, we fixed it, and then these other ones showed up after the paving was done.
Yeah.
And I could say there's no way, just find it.
That's something Trey and I have talked about, you know, do we just bid the whole thing out and let them, you know, charge us a lot more money and then not have, they don't have to do anything? Or do we roll the dice and try to, you know, save a few dollars for, for this? So, you know, maybe it's something we can look at with having them do a, some kind of inspection before they.
I've done it both ways and it's still, you know, they, there's still a warranty, they can still, it's, it's hard. Like I say, that unforeseen one, they could have, even if they would have done that, they could have, you just don't know, you don't know some of that stuff until you monkey, you know, so.
I hadn't thought, I hadn't thought about that, Jerry, that, you know, it could be fine until you disturb it.
Yeah, it's, it's, like I said, over here, we had been in there twenty-two years and they, we ran trucks in there all day. Six, but six weeks later, all of a sudden, we had a soft spot, we had to dig down three feet and was, and you haul vans and trucks up in there twenty years. Until we disturbed it, so you just, you don't know.
I think with that, spending the citizens' money wisely, I mean, if we do a, a project and save the citizens fifty grand, I mean, they're gonna be happy that way.
Sometimes it's better to just have them do the whole thing, I think, on, on sometimes, and then that way they are, you know, liable for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we are, you know, we know mistakes were made and we're looking at how we could have avoided it. In this one, I'm not really for sure, because like I said, we had them eleven to thirteen ton trucks rolling up and down that road through the whole paving process and never saw another problem after that one soft spot developed.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I, I just heard several comments, well, they just pay it through, now they're digging it up again. What's, what's going on, why are you, why are you doing this? So I did have a lot of those comments.
I get that for sure.
I think town and I think staff has some direction to work with Frontier and.
Yep.
Come back to us and see a couple answers and we'll be good, so.
Cool.
I do have a, I do have a question, I, I guess this might be more for Frontier. How do we even know that the test results they gave to us are the asphalt that came to this project? And is that, is that the test results for the batch they made that day that went to every project? It, does it, is the mix different every hour? I mean, this is, you know.
Yeah, it's often a seasonal test, not, not a daily test or a project test. So they'll take their batch, they'll pre-mix their aggregates, they'll get their drums for their oils. And then they'll have those tested as a batch for, it'll be for several months, they don't have them to be done on a regular basis.
And they'll do different ones for if you're doing two lifts or one lift. You know, if you're doing two, three inch lifts or something, that's a different mix than a, just a straight two inch driveway, I mean, that, that's all.
And in this case, this actually could be the day, if you look at the date of their report, it's April eleventh when they got it. We were one of the first projects they rolled out this year, starting in April. So it could have been, I, I will see if I can find out for sure, but it could have been, this could be the test from the asphalt that was churned that day for our project, because we were one of the first projects they did this year.
Alright.
They'll get her fixed.
Okay, we all get on that agenda item?
Yep.
Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the panoramic Mesa water connection discussion, and I'm going to recuse myself from this one, so. So I'll turn it over to trustee Hammerhand, would you like the gavel?
Do I need a gavel? Can I use it on him?
Sure. Just let me know when you guys are done.
I didn't even know the next step.
Yeah, alright.
Thank you, Derek. Easter, see ya. Sorry.
So I guess it's up to me then. Next item on the agenda is the panoramic subdivision request for water service. And I will turn it over to Director Trey Foner.
Thank you. Alright, for those of you, we have Jeremy here with West Water, right?
Correct.
Engineering, he is their engineering at panoramic Mesa. That's a subdivision with nineteen residents that is just northwest of town off of Silk Mesa Road. It is a homeowners association who directs the O R C or operator responsible charge. They have their own water system currently, they are under a Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment Drinking Water Enforcement Order for water quality violations. And they would like to speak with the board about the possibility of tying on to the town's system to service these nineteen residents. And Jeremy, in the packet, you'll see Jeremy has put together two options. And he can go through them options in more detail with you and between us and Attorney Sawyer with Water Rights, we can answer, try to answer as many questions as we can that you might have.
Alright, thanks, yeah. So, so like, like Trey just said, so the, the, it's a public water system because they serve, they have more than sixteen taps and more than twenty-five people, so they're considered a public water system. So it's kind of why they're in the boat they're in. So in the past, they've had mainly T H M problems, which is caused by disinfection byproducts, by chlorinating, and then there's organic in the water. Creates these kind of cancerous carcinogenics that ultimately the division has decided are no good and they've reduced them to levels where they think is safe and, and the subdivision is routinely exceeding those. So in the past, what we've done already is we have implemented several improvements to, to fix the T H M problem, but in doing so, the wells have started to go dry. And so they're routinely having to kind of haul water, which right now, I believe they're hauling water, the, the water hauler that they're buying from is just buying town to salt water anyways. In, what was it, August of two thousand and nineteen, I did an engineering evaluation. Per the request of the C D P H E, they kind of outlined a bunch of solutions. And one of the solutions, which we thought was a little bit outlandish at the time, just because of the cost and the complexity of the project, was to tie on to the town's water system roughly where the fire hydrant is at the church on First Street, right?
Yes, First Street.
Yeah. The line was extended for that, to that church at some point and it's dead ended at that, dead ended there. The original evaluation, just basically connected the line there and extended up to the panoramic Mesa subdivision where we kind of envisioned that there would be a master meter and then it would connect to the, the, the existing distribution system in the subdivision. So option one in the packet, that, that is that option. The only thing that's changed about this option from that time period to this one obviously is the cost, like substantially has increased just because materials have gone up and construction has really gotten very expensive. Option one basically would do what, as I just said, is it would connect on all that hydrant there, extend it there to the subdivision, we would master meter and connect to the distribution. Because of the hydraulics, the last third of the subdivision's topography is relatively steep, if you're familiar with that. So there would probably be a booster station in there as well to get people water to those higher homes. And it would just be a V F D type booster pump that runs on pressure. That is the least, probably the least favorable option for them, just because one of the ultimate goals here is to remove their permit from the C D P H E and just become part of the town. So option two kind of lines that out. And, and realizing that the town's not gonna want to take on a distribution system that has problems and is old and it's got issues like, option two kind of attacks that and we would, because it's, honestly, it's a relatively small increase to just go ahead and do the whole thing, but option two would extend a new distribution system up into panoramic, everybody would have their own meters, there would still be a booster station. And then realizing because it's the end of the line, that there could possibly be some chlorine problems and whatnot, there might, there might be a sodium hydrochloride booster station or something in there. Ultimately, what we're looking for today is some kind of comment or idea on what the town thinks for these guys to, to start moving forward with this. The goal here is to provide them with long-term water. We've kind of evaluated situations for drilling other wells. And because of where they're located, there's not a lot of real good viable options and, you know, the trouble is, when you start spending that kind of money, you're just poking holes hoping for the best. And there's been several well attempts in that area that don't produce. So it's just, it's not a variable, it's not a very viable option for them to just try to find another well in that neighborhood. In order to fund this project, I've been pursuing money through the S R F. They do not, ultimately, DOLA would be a really good application for this, except for DOLA doesn't, doesn't allow non-government issues, entities basically. So S R F is pretty much gonna be, or USDA, but even at the rural, even, and C W C B is not a good one either, because that's a raw water application system, so. They're basically gonna look to fund this with state revolving funds through the drinking water program. And it's gonna be a loan, it'll be a low-interest loan and ultimately, the, in order to make this feasible and safe for everybody, the S R F is gonna require that any funding on this to make this go forward is gonna be something like a general obligation bond where it would just be attached to the taxes on the homes for repayment and, and because there are only nineteen homes, it's gonna be a thirty-year term for sure, so. The subdivision would be funding the whole entire project. There would be no, they're not asking for town funds and then obviously they, they would expect to pay the tap fees associated with out-of-town taps, so.
So if this did go through, we approve, when would this start?
Well, it's water time, so, well, we've already got, I've, I've got the pre, the pre-qualification application through S R F going, which then we would have to do the project needs analysis after that, so it's.
Probably be spring, or are you trying to get this fall?
It would probably be next fall, at the earliest.
Next year, okay.
Because the reality is, is nothing with S R F moves fast. We do a lot of work with funding and we've got a lot of experience with those programs and we've just, you just, right now, they're really, with all the money that's coming through, they're just, they're overwhelmed and they're, they're really struggling, so.
So are you guys hauling a hundred percent of your water right now from Silk?
No. Their wells have actually managed to creep back up a little bit.
About how much are you hauling from Silk, you think?
Probably a couple loads a week.
What's a load, do you know?
Well, he's hauling twenty-two hundred gallons.
So they have an eleven thousand gallon tank. But the records that I have on that tank, that, that tank hasn't filled in on its own, I don't think it's completed a full fill cycle in a year, has it?
No.
Yeah.
And with his distribution ideas, we did find a leak, which- And with his distribution ideas, we did find a leak which significantly helped.
So the benefit of option two as well would provide, if, if we were to come in with a new distribution system going up through there, uh, I think, if I remember right, they only have, you have one hydrant and it's like a flushing hydrant, right?
Uh, we have three, three total hydrants, but one's a flushing.
But they're on like a two-inch distribution line, so they don't really serve much of a purpose for fire flow. They're uh, you, you might be able to fill a pump around one pretty slowly without collapsing it. So it, it would kinda provide the homeowners in there uh, some stability as far as, you know, having some fire protection and then obviously the, the long-term goal is to provide a stable water source.
So a question for Trey, this tap fee would be at the current, at the time they build it, that tap fee?
Yes.
It wouldn't be like right now, so if we did, so it'd be the.
Yeah, if they don't build until next year, it'll be whatever.
That tap fee at the time.
Something trying to spit out.
There, there would be two sets of fees that would have to be paid. There would have to be the Water Rights Dedication Fee. Which in discussions with our water engineer, so the town's plan for augmentation assumes five percent losses for in-house use. Uh, and currently that's, you know, everything is decreed to go to our water treatment plant. And so you get that very low loss rate because you're using the treatment technology that we do. Individual septic systems have a fifteen percent loss rate. So essentially they would have to be paying a multitude of three for the Water Rights Dedication Fee. Uh, to match the increase in consumptive use from what the town currently has in its water decree. And then on top of that, there would be the tap fee or the system improvement fee and that goes to repay the town for the physical infrastructure that we have. Water plant, the tanks, the mains, the, all the distribution system. And I don't remember off the top of my head what the, what the code says in terms of.
It's three times.
Three times the tap fee is?
Plus, that's for standard fixtures and then anything over the standard fixtures, it's a kind of a per-residence change and if you have four bathrooms that instead of two, um, I don't know what the, there's, there's recapture fees in there. We, we kinda sat through a preliminary meeting a few weeks ago and worked through some of those tap fees and um, the tap fees for this project are just based off the real straightforward things because I didn't know what, you know, what each house
What the E Q R rating was on each.
For each house. So just the tap fees for this project are five hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
So you don't know the E Q R for the whole project?
That would be, that's an assumption of one E Q R per lot, I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
If you average it out across the nineteen, it's somewhere in the vicinity of one.
Ye- yeah, averaged out.
Based on your math.
Yeah. Yeah, that, this is just a real straightforward, like taking the kind of the, the town code and just applying it and, and putting together the cost estimate.
What's option three?
There's not really an option three, there, for, for them, the, they could dissolve and just haul water. There, there was originally, we tried to make, um, our third option did include adding a tank for the town up on the hill that's up in there. Um, but the, the homeowners that would have to sell that property were strongly against that, so we just.
Having a massive water tank in their backyard.
Yeah, well, I mean, and honestly it was in a spot that it really wouldn't have been bad. You, you actually would, I mean, there's a, on top of the hill, there's actually a little bit of a rock and it would sit kinda back in there and I actually brought up my survey equipment and I shot your, um,
Sunrise tank?
Sunrise tank and then I shot this particular location and this particular location was actually three feet higher than those tanks. But the way that, the way it worked out, I could have kinda shortened and widened the tank and, you know, when you paint them and whatnot, they, they blend in really nice. And uh, but they were, they were more concerned with the tank falling in on their house and they had all kinds of issues, so um, it's been to my experience that that I knew that not to pursue that anymore, so.
So they won't be bringing more storage to the table?
No.
Okay.
Would yeah, that would've been nice.
Yeah, it would, it would've been a fantastic location because I mean, like I said, the hydraulics were, they were really nice.
And the footprint could've got about a hundred and eighty thousand gallon tank.
Does uh, each home have their own backflow preventers or just one? I don't see it on here.
Nope.
There's just one, is there any backflow preventers all up there or?
Nope.
No.
It's a public system on, on their own, they're not tapped connected now. So, yeah, so they don't have.
Don't have, okay.
Yeah. In fact, they don't even have meters at each house, um, on this particular system, so.
So then you were thinking just a master meter for everything?
That's, yeah, so if we were to just go straight up and you said, okay, you know, we would be on board just allowing you to extend the line and connect to it, then the, the, you would, the town would have a master meter that they would read and bill the, the client, the pub, or the users. And then it would be their responsibility to then collect the fees from each homeowner.
Then after the meter, would that be a, considered a private service?
Correct. On option one, it would still remain, it would still remain their uh, responsibility to maintain an O R C to flush and run water quality tests and all that stuff.
So that's six thousand, six hundred fifty gallons a day that we don't have to put out. So I mean, that's probably where that's at, I don't know. That's a lot of water.
Yeah, it's what, three to four million gallons a year or something like that?
Yeah, but two, uh, two point five million gallons a year.
Alright, sorry, I was a little.
Yeah.
So I'm unfamiliar with the general area, is there a possibility of more expansion beyond what's currently on the drawings? I know there are a couple of more individual homes being built, but is this, does this have the potential to serve that, any larger development going on?
If, if somebody, yeah, if somebody were to like, come in there and develop something, then they could definitely, um, the size that I have proposed is an eight-inch line. Uh, so that would carry a lot of capacity and so if you were to, if we were to extend that.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be able to tie on without coming back in front of the board.
Of course.
Yeah.
I'm ju- I'm just thinking if the infrastructure's going in, is it scalable? Are we building it to suit needs today or tomorrow, whenever, whatever comes down?
Yeah, no, cause.
Thinking ahead.
I mean, it's my, it's our experiences, anytime that you, I mean, we would, all they really need is a four-inch line. You know, so that, that's not realistic if you're gonna put something in the public right of ways and probably, and possibly you don't wanna restrict something in the, in the overall planning phase, you don't wanna, that, that, you don't wanna bottleneck it by doing something like that, so. Um, and really for the difference in cost from four to eight inch, it's not worth bottlenecking it, so.
Yeah, cause in the future, you know, you might have other subdivisions, oh, well, you know, the town let them hook on, why can't we? You know.
Well, that's exactly, so that is the, the kind of a double-edged sword on this. You will probably have that interest, you know, if somebody's like, well, you allowed them to do it. And that's why you do the bigger line because then in the future, you know, you have the potential to, to collect those services and uh.
And that's my, that was sort of what underscored my line of thinking is really this is an investment on what may happen in the future up there that despite the fact no one's come up to us today.
At no cost of the town.
Yeah, I mean, my, my major concern uh, i- is what you brought up, which is the, the lack of ability to deliver the water based on capacity, that, that's my major concern right now.
And that, there may be, may be helpful to provide some background as I, I don't know the degree to which Panoramic understands the concerns that the town has.
I do now, I actually just read your master plan the last couple of days. I was actually kinda studying that because it came to light, so I was kinda reading about that, so. When I started preparing this, I didn't know that there was a, I, I knew that there was something going on with the plant, but I didn't know that it was a capacity issue, I thought maybe like most plants that are under attack by C D P H E, it's usually water quality problems, so um, I mean, you know, realizing that, I mean, the, the flow in that, that subdivision's gonna be around, uh, what are, you know, ten gallons per minute? I mean, it's really not gonna be a, a substantial flow in there. The fire flow is what drives those pipe sizes in, in those subdivisions. So when you're sizing that pipe, it's not for your daily, not even for your peak, it's based on fire flow, so.
How did they put out a fire now if it happened, God forbid of course?
Probably wouldn't.
How does that fire get put out tomorrow?
Uh, pull water from all the ponds.
Hope, hope we get the week of proper irrigation.
I guess my, my point is that.
More than, more than likely, the fire department's going to come into town, hook onto a hydrant, fill tenders and tender water up there to put the fire.
They'll come back to the church and.
Yeah, to the church.
But there's still an impact on safety.
They'll hook up tenders there.
Versus having a hydrant in their front yard.
Ultimately, the, the, the way that, you know, the distance between things, uh, you know, even hauling water to the side with pumpers and whatnot, it's gonna be mitigation of that fire more than saving anything. I mean, reality is that when those things happen, they're, they're, they're going and you gotta be on it or.
It's keeping it from spreading to other people's houses versus.
Yeah.
Prevent one fire from becoming twenty.
Yeah, it, it, it's a different kinda goal in those subdivisions like that, so.
And then if the town said absolutely not, you guys would have to just, would you have, would, would the state require you to make your own little treatment plant or?
They got that, yeah, so that's what.
Oh, okay.
That's what we've been working on and we were doing pretty good, um, we, with the T H M, we actually got it down below the max sedent level and the quarter of the average was where it needed to be and then they ran out of water.
Oh, okay.
And uh, um, there seems to be the possibility in a few places that aren't very promising, but like, um, well, we've had well drillers in there kinda looking at spots and just the geography of that area is not very conducive for um, putting wells in, so. That's kinda why we're seeking this option.
Yeah.
If, part of the enforcement order is if they are not able to successfully mitigate the T H M, then we will be putting in a small ultrafiltration skid. But that's dependent on them having water. Otherwise, you know, that's just wasted money. So, there, they, they basically have two other options beside this at this point. Um, try to find a well location that produces or just dissolve the public water company and they just haul water.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, I guess my biggest concern, do we have enough water to provide these people, but overall, I'm not against it, it's just do we have enough water to provide?
Well, we're working, uh, what's the option of holding out until we can figure out our plant, like get a new plant built? But.
I'm just, by the end of three months.
They would have to be.
Well, the timeframe appears to be four to five years before we have a new plant.
Four to five years?
They can't wait that long.
You haul water until they can. Go to haul water until they uh, come back or?
I don't wanna be a stand there, but hauling water, they're probably gonna get it from our bulk water, so we're gonna be providing them water.
Well, yeah, but yeah.
So I was just, I was actually just gonna make that point, so.
Yeah, but then we, uh, we'll shut the bulk water off, um, to supply our citizens first.
Well, if we, if we get to that point.
If we got to that point, so you don't know, that's the difference there.
No, we could argue though that by supplying these people the water, we're gonna increase their safety. One of the things in our charter is that we provide for silt and the surrounding area. Um, the amount of water that they're gonna use, currently, yes, our peak and sort of, we're worried about some of our capacity issues. But that's, now the passage was that for, we talked about earlier, was that for existing things that are all out that aren't being used or what we're currently using right now?
For.
Capacity of the plant?
Capacity of the plant is, them numbers are based off of what we run the plant at now, the memo that you talk in this memo, that is, the two hundred and twenty gallons a minute is an average of what we run the plant year-round, what we tried around the plant. The two hundred and sixty-five gallons per minute is max we can push through each skid on that plant.
And we still have four hundred to six hundred E Q Rs that we have to deliver um, to these developments that are coming down the pipe.
To the developments that are sitting there with empty lots.
Right.
That.
That if they, that's if they get done.
Well, they're already developed or.
If they buy, and that's also if they pay taps.
Bellvis is already building, so it's coming. Bellvis is already building, so the, their structure's up in the air right now, so.
Yeah.
It's already coming down.
Yeah, and that, um, yeah, then there's ninety-two under construction and there's still four hundred and forty-nine vacant lots out there that could construct, who knows when that's gonna happen.
Two hundred and seventy with Divide Creek, Reslinda and Heron's Nest.
And.
That are, that, these aren't accounted for either, right?
Not in our daily numbers because they, they haven't been plotted, they haven't any, you know, and like Heron's Nest is still.
Right.
I'm not sure what they're.
Well, Heron's Nest, I wouldn't even necessarily consider that a.
But we've already committed to them.
Well, we haven't committed to them yet.
Well, we haven't, technically we haven't committed to Divide Creek.
Okay.
Are all these, just out of curiosity, are, are all these in the town and silt's uh, service limits or is this stuff that you planned to annex or?
No, everything but Heron's Nest is already in city limits, yeah.
And subdivided.
And subdivided, correct.
So have gone through the planning process and?
Yes.
So you're making an average of like three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons a day? So. At two hundred and twenty-five gallons a minute? Is that what you said, two hundred and twenty-five is what they're running at?
Um.
Or each skid?
Yeah.
So you're making six hundred thousand gallons a day? You have two skids?
We have two skids, we're, we're making about four million gallons a day. I mean, not four million, point four million gallons a day.
So four hundred thousand.
Yeah, four hundred thousand and that's taken into account.
Hours a day without nothing breaking, that's not even taking it offline to.
Yeah.
Bennett.
That's only accounting for the time we're down for them to go through the backwash cycle.
Yeah, so.
I don't mean to put you on the spot Trey, but given what you know and your level of expertise, can we do this? From a delivery standpoint?
That depends.
I know, I'm, I'm asking you to throw a dart here.
You can, if all these other lots that we have within town that are undeveloped, set they're undeveloped like they have been for the last three or four years. We can handle nineteen more, but if all them lots start to develop tomorrow and start coming online, no. We won't be able to handle the, another nineteen.
And nothing goes down.
Right.
Yeah.
No malfunctions.
Yes. So, yeah, we're right there with the water plant.
Yeah.
I mean, nineteen, we're at, we're talking about nineteen more units and not being able to service them.
Right. So why, why keep uh, putting pressure on it right now? We don't have the luxury of that. I'd love, definitely love protecting the public and de- I would vote yes in a heartbeat for something like this for you guys, if we had the water to give. We don't, we gotta protect our citizens that we do have here right now, that have been paying on this.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta increase the capacity of the water plant.
Right.
Or do we need to revisit the idea that we discussed earlier with regard to bulk water? To give us that buffer in order to protect these citizens?
Well, there's probably nineteen R Vs in town that people are living in that shouldn't be, get rid, get rid of those and.
Chief Kai, get him to go cut nineteen pieces of hose and we're in.
Find nineteen eighty U's that.
And then the, the other thing, I mean, just throwing it out there so you have all the information. You have this other memo that I gave you and if you look at the top line, that is basically what we would, um, I don't know if I gave you one or not, Jeremy?
Okay, so.
So the, the top one is if we don't annex them in, that's nineteen tap fees at twenty-seven thousand, three times the rate. And then that's what we would get in a year's time for monthly rate because they would pay one and a half times the water rate of an in-town user.
So about two hundred and fifty thousand liter in water rates we'd bring in.
And that's what, that's what that breaks down, so.
Yeah.
By, if you allow them to come in, there's close to a half million dollars worth of money that would come to the town to go torch. That would come to the town to go torch.
Because they're gonna be building versus these others that are hypothetical.
Exactly.
And that's kinda where I'm leaning, that's why I would be.
That's where my crystal ball gets mu- uh, money.
But the rate they're paying would be equal to fifty-seven lots in town.
Yeah, which would help us, would give us the revenue, give us the income that we need to pay for the new water plant.
Or help me for water. Is the liability.
I understand.
If they, if, uh, Trey or Tony or Drew Barry says it's doable. We'll take the liability on, on our shoulders, okay? But for the board to have the liability for that, for, for the water, that's just where that's.
My only thought, I guess, just, just my opinion is, something we have to think about is not for liability, but we do this. Like Trey said, we have people already committed, you know, I mean, there are lots, yeah, they're not developed yet, but. Do we take away from nineteen lots in town at the end that kept, that are already in-town limits?
Right, that's a good point.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
I agree, I think.
Fifty-seven lots, I guess.
Have a responsibility to the citizens we have, not the ones we may have. At some point in the future, I feel our primary obligation is to the citizens we already have.
They technically aren't citizens right now, the people we're talking about, the subdivision isn't technically citizens. I'm just saying.
Adjacent.
But also, this is my, my other way of looking at it though too is what I was, my argument for it is. It's like in the hospitality industry, when you have hotel rooms or airline industry. They don't sell the number of seats they have. They oversell the seats because they know they have seats that aren't gonna be used. And I'm not saying that we do that to an extreme level, because obviously, we wanna make sure we have water for everybody. But I think it's worth the risk to provide this service to them. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't feel like it's gonna be that big of a risk. I feel like the extra income well offsets the risk.
We, yeah, we're, we're providing for nineteen homes at the price of fifty-seven lot, fifty-seven people, so I mean, that's.
I think that's. And the thing is too, and that's just one year, and year after year after year, they're paying that extra fee.
Revenue.
Yeah, that is gonna provide revenue that we're gonna need for the new plant and stuff.
I'm inclined to, to agree, I guess my question is about option one versus option two. Every single person in this room knows more about water than me, so would. If we have to pick from option one or two, which one do we prefer and why?
So, you're paying for it, so.
I mean.
I think they're, they have the option of picking one or two.
Well, no, I think we definitely can.
Would have in, major input on that decision. Yes.
I mean, yeah, I mean, my thoughts are, you know, I'd, I'd like it to be a private, e- even if it's, you know. Their existing pipe or brand new pipe, I'd still kinda like to be that whole subdivision as a private service. That's just my thoughts.
I am reluctant not to, to only have a master meter and not to have each house meter. Because it makes determining over-usage and determining leaks very problematic.
Yeah, so either way, option one will, will be to put individual meters in throughout. That's actually a desire of most of the people that live in there, it's kind of a, a source of contention, if you will, for. Um, the way that it's currently run, so.
Who's using the most water and?
Yeah, and I, I'd like to see.
And they've had to track down some leaks and without the meters, like you say. Without the meters, it's very difficult to start finding that stuff. Especially when you don't have enough water to really run and, and that stuff's in there with rock, it's not gonna surface, it's hard to find.
But that's part of both options, individual meters?
Um, yeah, both options will have individual meters. Option one just stops the main line. On Silk Mesa Road where you would connect, and then you would just bill the, the subdivision as a user, and they would be their responsibility.
They would split it up based on their meters.
And then option two is just to run all new distribution in there and with the hopes of that. You would have an entirely new distribution system where the town would be inclined to take care of it at that point. I, I mean, I, I put option together too because, I mean, so I actually am the, a district engineer for the town of Mesa. Um, the Grand Mesa Metropolitan District, the town of dinosaur, town of Nukla. And that, that's that stuff that I would look for is like, I would come in and say, well, why would I wanna take your old system? You know, it's problematic. So if I come in and offer an incentive to say, we make everything new, then you're gonna be taking on a system. That's in good shape and you're not gonna have to worry about it for a while. You know, you're gonna have your typical operation for ten years before you, you're. Having to address anything is the goal, so. I, I, cause for me, as a district review engineer, I would not, I would not take option two as a town unless it was, you know. Uh, or I would take, I would take on the system, I would, I would master meter it. And because I wouldn't want the problem in the subdivision, right? Uh, you know, because you're gonna have repairs and things or that you would have to have and that would.
And my line of thinking is, I work for the city of Glenwood. And all of those new apartment buildings and stuff that y'all see, the city's like, no, that, those water lines in there. The, the hydrants are the cities, but all the water lines are there, they're all private. So we, we have the valve in the street, okay, this is where we stop and that's where you guys go, and I kinda like that because. I mean, then, I mean, you'd always be, y- you know, chasing down water leaks and stuff, and at least this way, it kinda. It kinda limits the amount of work, you know, Glenwood has to do because, yeah, all of these new apartment complexes and subdivisions, they're all private. That's just kinda my line of thinking when, every time I say, I'd like to see this, you know, private service.
Six thousand gallons a day is a lot of pressure on that, on those skids. I mean, it doesn't seem much to us, ten gallons a minute doesn't seem much at all, but when you're not even barely. Making what you can make twenty-four hour and all day long. It's a lot.
Alright, so you're, what, what's the flow rate, you're basing that on like a hundred and fifty?
So I got your EQR's at nineteen.
Yeah.
Right, and three fifty in EQR? That's what Drew Barry and, uh, Tony said today.
That's pretty high, actually, but.
Our EQR is three fifty a day?
That, that's based on like old fixtures and kind of.
Right.
That's, that's pretty high.
What would you, what would you say for EQR?
EQs are down to around eighty-five to a hundred per person per day. Typically, I have two point six people per house, you have nineteen houses. It comes out to forty-one hundred, but, so, it's four thousand, yeah.
Forty-one hundred of none, of water we don't have, it's still forty-one hundred of water we don't have.
Yeah, I mean, it does say info item, I mean, are, are, are we looking for a decision tonight or?
No, I, I, I would tell you that, I mean, at a minimum, we'd need a couple of. Of weeks, uh, in our call with Michael Ari and your water engineer, or water rights engineer this morning. Uh, we needed to confirm with, uh, an entity named the Division Engineer. It's the Water Rights Regulator, that we can serve, uh, septic. Individual septic systems without having to modify the plan for augmentation, that there's an administrative way to. Deal with how that affects the accounting of how much water we're using. And so if you were to say, we're interested in exploring this, Michael and I would. Set up a time with the Division Engineer to talk about that. Um, i- if we have to amend the plan for augmentation, that is yet another complexity. That we would want to walk through with you. Uh, if the state regulator says, oh, we, we can deal with that through accounting practices, which are simply administratively determined. Um, that removes that as a, an issue, so if, if you say. Explore some more, we'll undertake that additional diligence stuff.
I think we should explore some more.
I, I'm in favor of exploring it.
We need more information.
I agree.
Is anybody?
I'm opposed, yeah, I'm, I wouldn't be interested in that and spending the money on our part to take care of this. For water we don't have. You know what I mean? If everything was all good, heck yeah, in a heartbeat.
Yeah, like I said, when I, when we were originally exploring this, I didn't, the water situation wasn't explicitly. Uh, laid out as, as, as dire as it sounds, so.
Does it have to be unanimous to?
No. I mean, if there's a majority that says. You know, undertake some additional, uh, investigation, that's.
And then you guys have information now that there's a chance that you're gonna be spending money that's not gonna go anywhere. If we can't provide the water too, so I mean, you guys are taking a risk as well.
Well, I mean, they don't have to execute any documents, I mean, we're a little ways away from any of that anyway, so.
But this gives you enough information to go back to the community.
Tell them where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they can definitely update their, their board and say, you know, that we, we've met and we've talked about it. And that the town's exploring it in fur- further depth, so. And they can update them and let them know that the, the supply si- si- um, situation is. Pretty tight and, uh, that's kind of the limiting factor, it kinda sounds like right now, so. Yeah, this is, five years from now, we had a new water plant that we're hoping to build, would be a hundred percent, no problem, wouldn't, wouldn't even be discussion.
Yeah, please make it clear to them that capacity is.
Oh, yeah.
Literally the only factor that there's any hesitation.
Yeah, e- exactly, I'm, I mean, if we have plenty of water, then yeah, I'm, I'm all for it, but if we don't have enough water, then, yeah, no.
And is that enough for your attorney's lawyer?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Michael Ari and, and whether it, getting an appointment with the Division Engineer takes. A little bit of time, but if not the next meeting, I would think by the one after that, we could report back.
I guess we're on to the next item on the agenda.
We, unless there's further questions.
That's all I got for you tonight, start the conversation, so. Yeah, I appreciate you listening.
What was your name again?
Jeremy.
With West Water, Jeremy with West Water?
Correct, so, we're also water and wastewater engineers, so, seems to be a lot of us, but, there's a lot of water and wastewater. I know, everybody needs it. And one thing that's for sure is the division, uh, creates job security for us, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good to our illustrious leader there, Jeff.
Good job.
Derek from here.
To supplement, that would be a good. But if we could nail that down.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I'm, I'm sure that they've got receipts, being that they're a public entity, they gotta record all that and then. There would be a way to tabulate what they've moved, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you have any other questions, feel, feel free to give me a shout out. Will do.
Thanks again for your time.
Yeah, you bet. Have a good evening.
Alright, thank you for that.
You have fun. You didn't listen, so you don't, wouldn't be thanking me.
Oh, he did fine.
That part of the meeting.
We as in me are glad you're back.
Alright, uh. Next up is resolution number nineteen, series twenty twenty-two. A resolution for the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silk, Colorado. Approving and amending restated subdivision improvements and development agreement for the Camario Plan Unit Development Subdivision. Phase two in the Town of Silk, Colorado, and we have a continuance requested until October eleventh.
Yeah, we're finishing up the town's review of the application and materials and. As you recall, you reinstated, uh, final plat approvals for the subdivision back in April, May?
Somewhere around there.
Uh, we received, uh, final engineering work product, uh, earlier this month. And so we're just working our way through that and the, the. Even though the plat has been reinstated, we'll be, bring, we will be bringing to you. A subdivision improvement agreement for your review and approval together with. Uh, a set of the plans that the developer has come up with for the park area and for the road extension. So, we should have that to you on the next agenda.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to move resolution number nineteen, series twenty twenty-two to the October eleventh twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Do we, because it's a public hearing, does that matter or no? I'm just curious.
I don't think that, I actually don't think this is a public hearing for an SIA. So I think you're fine.
Fine, okay. Alright, we have a motion by trustee Seifert to continue resolution number nineteen, series twenty twenty-two. To the October eleventh twenty twenty-two meeting, seconded by trustee Hanahan, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Next up is the second reading of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the Town of Silk, Colorado approving the sale of town-owned property located on Highway six and twenty-four east of the Come and Go. Service station and property unneeded for any governmental purpose. I will turn this over to Attorney Sawyer.
So this is the second reading of an ordinance that we discussed in more detail at the last meeting, it involves. Uh, property that the town acquired next to the Come and Go off of Highway six, the intent of that acquisition was to. Make property generally available within the town for economic development with a focus on sales tax generation. Uh, the town received a proposal to purchase the, this property in the spring. It had various contingencies, including, uh, the later disclosure of the intended tenant. Uh, of the property and an estimate of, uh, gross revenue that would be generated. Uh, that information was then subsequently provided, uh, this tenant is a family dollar?
Yep.
Family dollar. Uh, the, you had previously approved, uh, the contract. But per your town charter, the actual disposition of the property requires a, an ordinance. Uh, and so this will complete that technicality so that we can move, uh, towards closing. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by the board? Okay, uh, the time is now eight ten PM and I'll open up the public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two. Persons deciding to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
Thank you. And we have nobody here in the public with us in the chambers. Uh, so the time is now eight eleven PM and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
I'm still against it, having a dollar store in the center of Silk.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two as asked presented.
Second.
Alright. Uh, we have a motion by trustee Brittenall to approve the second reading of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two, seconded by trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed?
Aye.
Can we do a voice vote on that one to get it clear, please? So trustee Hanahan?
Aye.
Aye.
And that was trustee Flores, trustee Brittenall?
Aye.
Trustee Fawson, is it now? Okay, trustee Seifert?
Aye.
And the mayor is a yes also. Motion passes four to two. Alright.
We will get that published and get a closing setup.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is the August twenty twenty-two financial report, and I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are at sixty-seven percent of the year. We are doing fabulous with our tax income, whether it be sales tax or use tax. We are ahead of schedule on all of our fees as far as trash, water, wastewater and irrigation fees. Um, we're doing well with, um, revenues overall and. As well, they're, they're down there below the sixty-seven percent. Um, I have some research that Mayor Protem had asked for about the increase in interest. Since we moved that money from A and B to C safe, had we kept it there, we would have gotten. About six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars worth of interest. And having moved it, we've gotten eleven thousand seven hundred dollars, which is about fifty-three hundred dollars additional interest. Revenue that we've received since January of twenty twenty.
Nice.
And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Five thousand free dollars sounds good to me.
For, for, for no work.
Exa- I said free dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said five thousand three.
No, free, free dollars.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Got nothing either.
No questions there.
Looks good, though.
Hey, John, Amy, thanks.
Thanks, Amy.
It's not just me, it's everybody.
You're the face of it all. Cause you're the one we're gonna yell at if it's not right, good.
I don't yell.
She's lying.
Alright, next up is Administrator Staff Report. We'll turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
I don't have anything to emphasize, except, uh, that we are seeking a planning and zoning, a commissioner, uh, to fill a, a spot on, on the commission, and anyone who might be interested, uh, can uh, pick up an application here at the Town of Silt, at the Town Hall, or on our website, townofsilt.org. Uh, those applications need to be returned by five PM on October fourth, so if any of you know anybody who might be interested in serving the town in that regard, that'd be great. Um, or if anybody in our, you know, if they're in TV land were interested, we'd love to hear from them. And, uh, if they have questions about the position, they can call, uh, Town Clerk Sheila McIntyre, she can answer any questions for them. That's all I have. Any questions for me on anything I wrote?
And for those that wanna see it, the first week of October is when they are scheduled to be here to start putting in the new fall protection up at Mesa View to get rid of the pea gravel. We have that park closed currently in preparation for that.
Nice, and that's that rubberized?
Yes.
Stuff? Cool.
This is that, the learning experience for the town, figure out how to spray it ourselves, or?
How to put it down ourselves, yes. They're supposed to train us on how to, to do it, so maybe in the future, we can do it ourselves and not have that added cost.
Okay. Alright.
I also have something, Mr. Mayor, um, or maybe Jeff does. We were talking about getting a head count for anybody who wanted to attend the Laugh Your Tail Off event, so that way we know if we have a full table of people going.
Can you remind me when it is?
How many, what do you have, let, let's let?
October.
I believe it was six spots at the table.
Yeah, it's October.
You'll recall you, uh, you guys made a contribution to them, and as part of that, you.
How many, how many seats are taken?
None.
None?
We thought we'd offer them to you all first, and if there's any.
I'd take, I'd take two, I mean, could my wife be, my wife and I'd go, so, cause we go every year, so.
Perfect.
If anybody else, it's up to you guys.
Sure, yeah, call Sheila.
I'm unavailable, so somebody can definitely use my spot.
I am unavailable as well.
I believe I'm unavailable as well, so.
Okay.
Now we, it's a good event.
I definitely, it is a great event, and if, um, obviously, there's seats open, I definitely, if there's staff members that wanna go, I would highly encourage them to go, because obviously, we'd like to see a full table, if we're paying for, the table's been paid for.
Yeah.
Get, get some people there and let them, let them enjoy the, the shows, cause it's a good time.
Sounds good. Amy, anything you'd like to?
No, I did it with the, with the interest. I did it in my financial.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Uh, next up then will be, uh, board comments, and we'll start with trustee Clausen this week.
I don't have much, other than I, I saw you guys pave the path up Seven Street, that looks really good. I haven't been over to the other one. Did you guys get that one too?
Yes, they did. They did get the one up by the Stoneridge Stage.
Cool, nice.
There's a few things we gotta, they gotta come back and finish up. They didn't have the risers for a couple of the valve boxes, so they'll be back for that.
Okay. Trustee Seifert?
Have you talked to Seifert at all on them two speed bumps? Went off the interstate and the one in front of the pizza place, where the asphalt meets the concrete?
Yes, I have, but I will talk to him again.
That's about all I have.
Trustee Hanahan?
Uh, first off, an apology for missing, uh, the, the last board meeting. I had planned on attending remotely, but work had to take precedence. I'm trying to push back on any other journeys to the East Coast for the rest of the year, but apologies to everyone. Um, the other thing I, I wanted to ask, are we done with the, the summer concerts? Are those done for the season?
Yes, yes.
Then, then a big thank you to the whole events team and Nicole and her leadership. What an amazing season we had. I didn't make it to all of them, obviously, but the ones I was at were outstanding.
And we had music at each of the farmer's markets, which was well received as well.
I checked out a couple of those as well. Also, great, good chance to get out and, and meet the community. So thanks to everyone who was a part of that. That's it for me.
Alright, trustee Flores?
Nothing here.
Trustee Britnall?
Uh, over at the, uh, Salt Island Park, the dog park, um, community members that utilize that space, uh, the guys do a pretty good job of making sure that there are pickup bags available. Please use them if you, uh, can, because it gets pretty messy over there. Um, when I walk around, I try to take extra bags and get a few extra ones besides the ones my dogs drop. Um, in the past, Trey, with the town has done something, I'm asking you, cause Nicole's not sitting here to look at and ask her in particular, but they've done an event where we just organized to have a cleanup day over there. Um, sometimes what they've done is they've had like community members, some businesses have donated something. If there's someone can look at doing, organizing something before the snow starts falling, just cause if we get a good cleanup done over there before the snow falls, it'd probably be helpful for the spring.
Okay, um.
Or Jeff, if you wanna get that to Nicole.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember, there was an outside volunteer group that came in and did it last time. I'll have to.
I just know that, it's been a little while, it's been several year, a couple of years ago, I participated in one that um, the previous community director, head development director had done, where she, they had us, get us, basically, out there, anybody that wanted to come that day, and they gave out, had some freebie stuff to give away for helping out, and just get the community together and clean it up over there, so it's even more attractive than the new parking lot already makes it.
Yes, and we forgot to mention to you, there will be a ribbon cutting on the new parking lot for the boat ramp, and I believe it's October second Friday in October, I think. October seventh, sorry, next Friday.
Seventh will be the first.
Yes, the first Friday. There will be a ribbon cutting on the new boat ramp, and we'll have Middle Colorado watershed there, and I'm not for sure who else.
What time, do you know?
Nicole's probably texting that to me. I think it's nine or ten. I believe it's in the morning. Ten thirty, there we go.
Okay.
To be determined.
Alright.
We do have town, a town cleanup event this week. Maybe we could, uh, just emphasize the dog park during that.
Well, this is something that in the past, we've done, we're just met up over there and had, people had their own gloves or whatever, they had a bunch of trash bags pervia- of, and people walk through and just pick up the random trash and stuff that's over there. And it's not terrible over there by any way, shape or form, but it just, especially before snow falls, it's the best time to get that stuff cleaned up.
Yes.
Otherwise, it just builds up to the next, even more for the spring.
And there'll be donuts and coffee at the ribbon cutting also.
Nice.
Just FYI.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, okay.
Sorry.
And that, no, you're fine. Um, I got nothing, so. Uh, we do have an executive session, so I'll make that motion, we'll get that rolling, and then, uh, we will take a break to get that all set up, and we'll finish up tonight, so. I make a motion to go into the executive session for the discussion of a personnel matter under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F, uh, Town Administrator Jeff Lehman's contract.
Second.
Alright. That motion was seconded by trustee Britnall. All is in favor?
Aye.
Nope, sorry, motion was trusted, seconded by trustee Seifert.
I didn't say anything that time.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And we've got a meeting in the morning, so I'll talk to.
Alright, can everyone hear us?
I can.
Okay.
I can.
Alright, the time is now eight forty-one PM, and the executive session has concluded. No formal action was taken in the executive session. Uh, the participants in the executive session were no one entered the executive session and no one left the executive session. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violations of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Uh, seeing none, the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright.
And get one in there.
Trustee Britnall to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Clausen. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, thank you, everybody.